Oh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju wachea kuekue. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. We were just meeting in committee, the whole closed meeting. We did discuss some potential acquisition or disposition of employment lands. So with that, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Bohan. The council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the addits. We have just one item. We have an addition of a delegation. Can I have a mover and seconded for the addits, please? Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Neil. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, moving on. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. I, Lisa O'Sannick of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of CAO Recommend Report Number 96, Item 1A, 1B, discussing the University Hospitals Kingston Foundation Together We Can fundraising campaign, in that I am employed by the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, which establishes and implements policies regarding funding of hospitals, including requirements for community funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I, Peter Stroud of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the same matter, the matter of CAO Report Numbers 96, Clause 1A and 1B, as I am a current employee of Kingston General Hospital.
Thank you. Councillor Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I, Adam Cannon of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Closed Item A, 16-337, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality because I have a business relationship with one of the parties.
Thank you. Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I, Mary Rita Holland of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of CAO Report Number 95, Clause I, Implementation of KEDCO Review Report, as my employer Keyes Job Centre regularly partners with KEDCO.
Councillor Hutchison. Do you have a pecuniary interest to declare? Go ahead.
I would like to declare conflict of interest related to Report 95, CAO Consent, Item C, Report 16-313, as my employer Kingston Coop of Homes Inc. will be partaking through their Phase Two in the city program to conduct social housing portfolio building condition assessments. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other disclosures of potential pecuniary interest, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have one delegation. Christine Sibnovich will appear before council to speak to new motion number two, moved by Mayor Patterson and seconded by councillor Cannon with respect to engaging the services of an integrity commissioner. And just a reminder to our delegations that you have five minutes. Let's come forward.
Many of us in Kingston are very concerned about the integrity of council. This concern has been sparked by a number of issues in recent months, but it was made particularly acute when, as the city grappled with the highly controversial Capital Condo Development Project, many people noticed that councillor Adam Cannon appeared to be promoting the project on his commercial website for Kingston Condo Kings. This raised the question as to whether councillor Cannon had a pecuniary interest in the outcome of the capital vote. Beginning on August 25th, I, along with two other Kingstonians acting as individuals, though with the full support of the Coalition of Kingston Communities, contacted the clerk a total of four times prior to the capital vote on the conflict of interest issue, three times by email, one by letter. This communication was copied to the city solicitor, the mayor, and members of council and the ombudsman. Two of us also met with the mayor on the day of the capital vote. The mayor assured us that councillor Cannon was attending to the matter. In the declaration of pecuniary interest portion of the meeting, many of us were therefore very surprised when councillor Cannon declared that he did not have a pecuniary interest in the capital project, that he had secured a legal opinion telling him so, and that he would participate in the discussion and vote. It seems highly likely that councillor Cannon went into the meeting knowing the conflict question was at best far from black and white, and that the vote would be close. The fact that he voted anyway rather than take the prudent and professional approach, that is, declare a possible conflict and excuse himself is extremely troubling. Given that 7-6 vote and that the project had the enthusiastic support of the mayor, many of us were concerned by the procedural issues that continued to be unaddressed. So we're very glad to see the motion before you today, which directs the city solicitor to engage an integrity commissioner to consider whether councillor Cannon contravened the city's code of conduct. Of course, the bad news is its timing, after the contentious vote on the issue which gives rise to the investigation. Indeed, many are saying that council should rescind the vote on the capital project in order to defer it until after the integrity commissioner's findings are released. Advocates of the project may cite prejudice to the developer, who's already moving forward on the basis of council's vote, but that prejudice increases with each passing day. If council were to revisit the matter three months from now, the developer's losses and thus the city's exposure could be much greater. I know the mayor got wins of calls in the community for legal action, which would be pursued through the Superior Court pursuant to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. No doubt the mayor and councillor Cannon are hoping that engaging an integrity commissioner will mean that can be avoided. Given that the City of Kingston Code of Conduct contains no provision for sanctions for breaches of its rules, the outcome of an integrity commissioner's investigation is potentially less punitive than that of a finding of conflict of interest by the courts, which could result in councillor Cannon being removed from his seat on council. Given all this, it's especially important that the motion before you is carefully worded and matters of procedure are attended to with care. I want to point out that Mayor Patterson and councillor Cannon have already made a significant misstep. Councillor Cannon should have had no role in drafting the motion, moving or seconding it, nor a role in discussing it or voting on it. Why? Because he is manifestly in conflict of interest. It's hardly proper for a motion about the conduct of a councillor to be drafted by the councillor in question, as he should not be involved in shaping the terms of reference of an investigation into his conduct. That this is playing out as it is is only more evidence that the City of Kingston has a poor understanding of the nature of conflict of interest and due process. Furthermore, I would urge that the motion be drafted such that the integrity commissioner has the authority to and should seek out members of the public with relevant information in an open and transparent process. I, for example, would welcome being treated in particular as a de facto complainant. The scope of the motion should be broad to enable the integrity commissioner to investigate all potential violations of the code of conduct.
Thirty seconds.
The City of Kingston's reputation has already been badly damaged by this incident. Many people are talking about the bad smell at City Hall. Many are wondering about the city's prospects of getting funding from Queen's Park or Ottawa. The time to act is certainly overdue, but let's at least make sure that the city's actions on this matter are not further tarnished by an improper procedure or weak motion. Kingston is our city, and the integrity of its council matters to us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Ms. Sibnovich. Do you paint all of council with the same brush? And you seem to be implying that our individual collective integrity is at risk, and could you explain?
Well, I think the integrity of the collective can be harmed by the actions of a few. We all know that experience. It's not that everyone is equally guilty or that everyone has participated in the wrong, but the reputation of a collective entity can be harmed by the actions of a few. So I'm not suggesting that everyone is involved in this issue, and I don't think I said that.
Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. In a recent op-ed by Professor Jonathan Rose, he gave four different things that he felt an integrity commissioner should do, and among those would be to take the decision away from a councillor, to advise council on conflict of interest matters, and to investigate matters, and to provide real value to the office. He says, "It has to educate the public by publishing reports." Do you feel that the motion as it stands does all these things? Or would you think that Professor Rose's op-ed is not being fulfilled?
Well, I think Professor Rose's op-ed, if you're talking about the op-ed that I'm thinking of, was calling on the city to appoint a permanent integrity commissioner. So as I understand it, the integrity commissioner, as I understand the motion, maybe I've got it wrong, but as I understand the motion, it's the appointment of an integrity commissioner for this particular case. So I'm not sure whether, I mean, and I think Jonathan Rose's remarks were very helpful, but I think he was talking about an ongoing position.
Councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. Two questions. One question is, so for the public to talk to the integrity commissioner, if there was a way that we could get that, whether it be that the report gets referred to Administrative Policies Committee once it's written, then you'd be okay to ask those questions in open session? Because I don't think we could do a one-on-one, it would have to be in an open public forum. So would that be, would you be amenable to that?
Well, I mean, I'm not pretending to write the rules for what, this is a very difficult problem, and I know you will need legal advice about how to go about setting up the terms of reference for the integrity commissioner. I'm just making a general point that I think the public cares a lot about this, and we want to be engaged, we want to be informed. How you go about that, I would leave to the experts who are involved in this, but I appreciate you asking.
Thanks very much. And my second question is, other than that point about the public, is there anything else in the motion that you would like to see added or redone? Is there anything else other than the seconded?
I think the motion is admirable in many ways. I think it would be important to have its terms of reference as broad as possible. So it's good that it refers to the code of conduct in general, and any other ways in which that can be underscored would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have no other delegations this evening. We have a briefing that will come later in the agenda. Are there any petitions to present? We see none. We have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions, so I will ask for Report Number 95 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor O'Sannick, that Report Number 95 from the Chief Administrative Officer Consent be received and adopted.
So there are a number of clauses, A through I. Clause C has been separated for councillor Hutchison's pecuniary interest. Are there any other separations from council? Councillor Allen.
F, please, item F.
F, it's been separated. Anything else? Deputy Mayor Stroud.
A, B, G, and I.
A?
A, B, G isn't George, I.
A, B, G, and I. Okay. Okay, so we will first deal with the items that have not been separated. So by my list, that would be Item D, Award of Contract for Repairs to Catarac Way Community Centre. Item E, Memorial Centre Market Mini Oktoberfest. Item H, Award of Contract Sidewalk Winter Maintenance East. And I believe that's it. Start with that vote. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, Item A, Enactment of a Bylaw to Consolidate the Delegation of Powers and Duties. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I'm having trouble with my digital version here, so I'm going to look on councillor Turner's copy, page 14 of the report, which is 16317. Sorry, just to ask your worship's indulgence, I have a question to do with delegated authority. Yes, here it is, right here. So this is on page 15 of the, bottom of page 15 of the schedule pages. Just read what it says. So this is, the delegate is Director of Planning, Building and Licensing, formerly Director of Planning and Development, and it says, "All the authority that council has respect in the granting of permits to approve minor alterations to designated properties. Authority under the Ontario Heritage Act to request, receive, review, and accept or reject plans, information, reports, and any other documentation required to make a decision when an application is made under the Act." My question is, the word "decision," so who makes that decision? I mean, in the introduction on the report, it says these are housekeeping changes. Just wanted to clarify, who would be the decision-making body in this case under delegated authority? Question to staff.
Through you, your worship.
Sorry. Yes, Mr. Clerk.
The report itself really is just a consolidation with respect to the delegations of authorities. There's nothing new that's being proposed at this time. So the decisions are made through council, and the delegation of authority in bylaw 2013-141 hasn't changed, so it's just a matter of consolidating those authorities.
So the decision, the word "decision" in this language would be the same as the decision that's currently made? So if it's made by council, it remains council, and if it's by another body, it remains that way?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on Item A. Please vote. And that carries. Item B is approval of an application for a heritage permit, 66 Earl Street. Again, Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you. Yes, so this is, I'd like to bring this to council's attention because this is a great illustration of one possible file that comes to us now under the current process, following a change at the Heritage Committee. So if you remember from past meetings, there's something under review right now, and we're in kind of an interim period. There will be a report, and we will have a process going forward that's clearer, and we will have a chance to decide on that process. But in the interim, I just wanted to point out that with the way that we're doing it now, this comes directly to us here at council. So this is an application for a heritage permit, and the decision-making body is, it always has been council, but it used to be, like at the planning committee, there was a decision at Heritage and a discussion at Heritage that included the applicant about the ramifications of the change and the options. And this discussion actually did happen in this case on a voluntary basis. A director brought it to the Heritage Committee, and we did have a conversation, and that's kind of in the small print of the report, but it's not as a recommendation from the Heritage Committee that we ought to approve or deny and what conditions we ought to have and so on. Those kind of minute details are the way Heritage Committee used to do things, and we will need to choose a new way of doing it at our next meeting. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Tonight, we have to decide as a council, and if you haven't read the Ontario Heritage Act relevant sections, if you haven't read the Old Sidnum Heritage Conservation District Plan, which is a lengthy document, you're making the decision tonight kind of in the dark. So because of that, I'll say as a friendly colleague, I will tell you that we did discuss options for the window here, maintaining the window, which is a heritage principle. You maintain if you can, you repair if you can, you only replace if necessary. We did, they're asking to replace. We did discuss it, and the comments are included in the report, and we weren't allowed to make a recommendation. So keep that in mind. We are making that decision now sort of as a council, and when we make the decision next council meeting on the process, you will have to decide if you want to be sort of on the front line of the decision-making process, or if you want to have the expert advice of the Heritage Committee. And you probably know what I would recommend, what people in the Heritage Committee are recommending, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, sort of as an illustration of what it's like at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call the vote on Item B. And that carries. Item C, Social Housing Portfolio Building Condition Assessments. Councillor Hutchison has stepped away, so we will call the vote. Please vote. And that carries. Onto Item F, Parking License Agreement, VirtuCar Car Share Program. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I just, I'm glad that this item is coming forward and that we're continuing our relationship with VirtuCar. I guess, based on our conversations that we had last week and last year around the Transportation Master Plan, I'm wondering if there is, if staff have been seeking additional opportunities to help elevate car sharing and our partnership with a car-sharing organization. So I'm looking to see options for transportation in our city, and by providing the spaces great, but I'm wondering if we could look at, or if we have been looking at accelerating or accentuating this.
Mr. Keach.
Through you, your worship, I would say that that is something that we can take into account when we come back with the Transportation Master Plan update, which is actually not that far down the road.
Great, thank you. I just, I think that the more that these are visible and seen as available, the more the market will grow. It's sort of, I think the company's waiting for the market to grow somewhat, so we have to kind of help move those pieces along to encourage people to uptake. I know a few people who are members of this organization and find it very convenient and useful, so I would like to encourage additional places for it throughout our city.
Councillor Neil.
Just very quickly, I'd like to point out that the best share program, travel share program, is still public transit. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote on Item F. And that carries. Item G, Award of Contract Winter Maintenance for Bus Stops and Shelters. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. And I did ask staff a couple of questions before the meeting, and I wanted to ask a couple of questions in open session based on that information. So you'll see from the report, there was an RFP process with one respondent, the same provider as for the last several years. You'll also notice the per-event price, which is quite modest. It's under $10,000 for the combined snow clearing and sanding, and under $5,000 for the sanding, salting only, per event. It's quite a small cost, and then the previous years, it was even lower. So the price has gone up, so I wanted to first ask staff, what's not in the report is sort of the number of shelters and maybe the reasons that the same provider is asking for a higher price per event.
Mr. Keach.
Through you, your worship, and discussing with public work staff and the contractor, I'd say the price increase is due to basically two main reasons. One, the amount of work, the amount of service that we're working for the contractor has increased significantly, and I think if you go back to the presentation a week ago, express bus routes improvements to our transit system, that has resulted in more shelters, more service, so there's a direct correlation to that as well. I think last year, there was some of that that took place as well, and our understanding is the contractor probably didn't bid the job properly, and after having experience, have adjusted their prices accordingly. So basically, more service required from the contractor and a realization that they needed an increase in the price.
Yes, so that's essentially what I was told by one of the members of your staff, that the last year, 2015, 2016, the price remained the same as previous year, but they knew about the expansion of the express service, but agreed to do it for the same price, and then realized they need to adjust their price this year, essentially. Thank you. So the other question has to do with the actual total numbers, because it doesn't include in the report the number of events, and so I asked for a five-year history of events, knowing that every winter is different. I won't ask you to read out those numbers. I did write them down, and I worked out the average, if you could just confirm that it sounds correct. The average of the last five years of both sanding and snow clearing was 23.4 events per season, and for sand and salt only, of 9.6 as an average. If you just quickly crunch the numbers, you see roughly $10,000. You're at around $200,000 for the events for both, and around an extra cost of approximately $50,000 for sanding, salting only. Does that sound about right, budget-wise?
Yeah, your numbers are very, very correct.
So $250,000, a quarter million for this contract, is what we could project under the current, using the average numbers and under the current prices, which have gone up, just so that we know for budgeting purposes what this is costing us. I thought it was important to point that out. I will be supporting the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote then on Item G. And that carries. Item I, Implementation of KEDCO Review Report, Service Level Agreements, Role of Council, and Staff in Corporations. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
I thought maybe someone else would want to speak for a change, but anyway. Try to keep this short. I think we've all been talked, this has been discussed many times, but there are members here from the public very interested to see what we do with this tonight. It's an ongoing issue. We've talked about it before. Essentially, there's questions... Essentially, there's questions that have come from the community, some of which have been answered, some not. There's questions of accountability, there's questions of where the money is going or where has gone in the past, there's questions of the cost effectiveness, you know, the cost benefit equation, and there's questions of philosophy of sort of how, what kind of EDO we might like to see in the future. And just to focus in on the financial piece for a moment, because we'll be discussing budget very soon and because there is suggestion in the community that maybe we ought not to be throwing good money after bad if it's not working, then maybe we shouldn't decide on this until we have our budget discussion, which is in a couple of months. So just before I go any further, I'd like to move to defer this item until such time as we have had our budget discussions for 2017, which I believe is in November.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Stroud has put forward a motion to defer, do you have that in writing, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Stroud?
Sure. So I believe I mentioned this to Councilor McLaren, if you would like to second the deferral, so to, until after budget deliberations.
Okay, so we'll have the clerk type that up, but I think it's a fairly self-explanatory motion to defer. Debate is with respect to time or place. Question for staff in terms of timing, is there any concern, any potential budgetary implications to wait and deal with the service level agreements until after budget? Sue Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to service level agreements, I don't believe so. With respect to achieving the corporate structures and getting, moving forward with the selection of directors, would be delayed a bit and would move into the first quarter rather than the timelines that are in this particular report.
Thank you. Given that answer, Deputy Mayor Stroud, do you still wish to defer the entire recommendation or do you just wish to put forward a motion to defer just the clauses with respect to the service level agreements?
So if I understand, the answer essentially means that we would be delaying the implementation of the service level agreements if we defer as I've suggested. Is that basically what you said?
Sue Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, so part of this report, this report deals with three particular items. One is the service level agreements and the introduction of those. The second one is the notion of council as members of the corporation, council as a whole. And the third item had to do with the staff members and how they would be positioned on the, on the board. So my response was with respect to the service level agreements and the budget, that that would not, that a deferral would not be a problem with respect to the other two items. It would delay the application to structure a new tourism corporation and amend the articles of the current economic development corporation. And that would likely be postponed until into the first quarter.
I think it might make, complicate things unnecessarily to defer part of the recommendation and not other parts and seeing as some parts are time-sensitive, I think I'll withdraw my deferral request.
I'm sorry, you will?
Withdraw, knowing, rather than splitting it up, I'd rather withdraw the deferral.
Okay, so with the consent of the secondor, motion to defer has been withdrawn. Deputy Mayor Stroud, you still have the floor and you have four minutes on the clock.
Okay, thank you. Maybe I'll stand up. So what do we need to happen as a council? We need to know that our money, our considerable $2.7 million that goes to this agency is being used in a very cost-effective manner. There's been suggestions otherwise in the community all along the way, which started, as I've said before, with my Doro de Dor campaign in my district, people questioning this, just outright, the wisdom of spending this money in this fashion. Also, we know that looking back, you can only achieve so much. We just went through a KEDCO review process and now we're at the decision point where we're asking for a new structure. And that structure is essentially the split off the tourism arm, have two different separate arms with two separate governance structures and oversight, which in a slightly different format. And I think a lot of that is good and I would like to find a way to support the recommendation. And I think to that end, the last couple of days, speaking with people in the community, critics especially, and also thinking about it, talking to colleagues, I worked on an amendment, which I've given to the clerks. And it would essentially add a couple of elements to the report, which I don't believe it alters the intent of the recommendation. The intent of the recommendation is to move forward with a new structure with higher accountability. And I believe the two elements that I'm introducing with this amendment further that, make it even more explicit, even more clear. So if you don't mind, I'd like to get the amendment up and address the amendment directly.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor, I'll take the liberty of reading it if I can. So that's moved by Deputy Mayor Stroud, seconded by Councilor Neal. That clause I of Report 95 be amended by inserting the following clause after clause four, that a probationary period be established for the EDO for 2017 only with a performance review to be conducted by a temporary working group comprised of the city treasurer, member of the Queen's School of Business faculty, a member of the city's audit firm, KPMG, and one member of the public to be chosen by the nominations committee. To review the EDO performance based on the metrics described in Penex B and that this report be presented to council before budget deliberations for the 2018 year to allow for a full transparent debate on the cost benefits of the EDO before their budget is set for the following year and that this report include the option to extend the probationary period one more year to 2018. Just a question for the city solicitor. Is there, is there anything in this that is of concern in terms of the mandate and power of the city vis-à-vis an outside organization?
Through your worship, I would indicate that the, a number of these provisions would be included in the service level agreement. In particular, it does refer to, as I read the draft, that there are provisions in the service level agreement which speak to annual reports, quarterly activity reports, those kinds of things which would be under the scrutiny of certainly the city and city council. A reference to a probationary period, I would submit, is an unusual terminology for a corporate organization in that a corporation, in this case, independently incorporated, that is its status. There is no probationary status under the Corporations Act. And as such, a corporation is either in existence or it isn't. I would reference the fact that in the service level agreement, there is a provision that if council determines that the agreement may be terminated prior to the expiration of the agreement upon notice. And I would presume that that would certainly be on the basis of any breach of the conditions in the service level agreement. So those provisions would apply. I guess further, I would say, in response to your question, the Economic Development Organization is an independent one. And going back to the first piece, as a fully constituted organization, there is no probation in the law per se for a corporation. That would have to be, I'd need further understanding about what was intended by that terminology.
I think it's, so if I interpret the answer from legal staff, I think that, I think the amendment, as you've put it forward, is fine except for the word probationary. So I'm wondering, Deputy Mayor Stroud, if you would be amenable to removing just the reference to probationary period but keeping the substance of the amendment, which speaks to the temporary working group reviewing the?
Yes, seeing as the word probationary, I'm told now is not, has no legal significance and is not defined anywhere, it may be confusing. In my mind, myself, I might still think of it as a sort of a trial period or a pilot period or a temporary period where things are under review. It doesn't actually affect the, removing the word doesn't affect the intent of the motion, which is really to have a third-party, you know, a third-party board balanced with various items that you see there to do it in this sort of independent review of performance and it's not of legal breach of contract that I'm talking about. It's not a legal review. It's a, it's a performance review about the cost benefit. So you see at the end of the, so yes, I'm happy to remove the word probationary period and associated language and just have the other temporary working group language remain. So maybe, maybe just remove probationary and?
If you could just give me one?
And the last few, and the last sentence.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Stroud, so my suggestion would be that we amend the amendment you put forward to remove the first line so that it would say that for 2017 only, a performance review be conducted by a temporary working group. So we would eliminate the words, approbationary period be established for the EDO. No.
Okay, yeah, that's okay, yeah. Is this an amendment to an amendment then?
No, so, well, we'll see if it's friendly in a moment. Actually, we need to keep for the EDO because you don't want this for Tourism Kingston. This is just for the EDO.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so it's say for, that for the EDO for 2017 only. And then at the end?
Yeah, the last sentence.
Can we just, can we just remove that last clause and that this report possibly extended the probationary period for one more year? Can we just eliminate that?
Yeah, because it only talks to the?
So is that, that's friendly?
Yeah.
And the secondor was?
I'm almost always friendly, so yes, that's friendly.
Mr. Clerk, can I see your? Okay, so we'll make that friendly, we're just correcting the wording on the screen. Okay, so with that, there's now a motion to amend on the floor, so Deputy Mayor Stroud, you can speak to it.
Right, so just, I think it speaks for itself. So all that's left in the amendment is this temporary panel made up of a member, so city treasurer, whose integrity and professionalism, I think, you know, everyone around council agrees, also skill set to look at the numbers, everybody agrees, is more than adequate. So that's Treasurer Kennedy. Then there's a member of the Queen's Faculty School of Business, that's an attempt to get someone with knowledge in this area. It would be a volunteer to come forward and sit as a community member on the panel, but someone sort of with a focused experience, skill set. The auditor from KPMG, this was a suggestion by the CAO when I spoke to him today, because the city auditor, KPMG, which also audits CAE, the Fronak Housing Corporation and other agencies, as well as the city itself, again, the skill set and the skills required for an actual, to look at the financials from an auditor's point of view, because that's one of the things that's been suggested in the criticism from the community, that we have never submitted the organization to an audit. Now, this wouldn't be an audit, this is a performance review, we'll make that clear, but having an auditor as part of that panel, I think is very, very good suggestion by CAO. And then that fourth member would be a member of the community to be chosen by nominations. And I think that's an important piece as well. That was suggested by the secondor, as was the School of Business, actually. Both of those were suggested by the secondor, Councilor Neal. Those are two community members, one with a sort of a focus and one that will be decided from the applicants, the nominations, to have community part of this. Hopefully, community members which represent, you know, the citizens that are affected by this because it's their tax dollars, right? So that's the sort of rationale for the four-member panel. And I'd like to thank the CAO and my secondor for their help in crafting the amendment. And I think that this is a way of moving forward in a positive way with the future EDO. We need to be clear to potential, you know, firms that may want to come and set up in Kingston or may, or ones that are already here and need help from our EDO. We want to make it clear that we're adding, are adding value to the equation, right? And trying to find a way forward that includes full accountability and a performance review to justify the cost that would be linked to the budget deliberations of the following year. I think this is the way forward and I'm hoping for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So would anyone like to speak to the amendment only, please? Councilor Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I really liked the amendment, the way it was originally worded, and I'm disappointed that we've lost the word probationary, because I think the intent of this amendment was that there would be a performance review and then if the EOD wasn't performing satisfactory to our expectations, the probation period would be finished and the EDO would be terminated. And now it looks like if the performance is a poor performance at the end of 2017, then we're going to have to performance manage the EDO for the following year and it's just, the entire intent of this amendment, I think, was to have a probationary period. So obviously, we have to follow the advice of the city solicitor to eliminate the word probationary, but now, you know, it's just, really dilutes the intent of the amendment and I hope that we hire the right person in the first place so that they get a superior performance review at the end of 2017. Like what choice do we have then if there is no probationary period, us as taxpayers funding KEDCO? So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud, will you take the chair?
I'll take the chair and you have the floor.
Thank you. So I just want to make a couple of observations. First of all, when you have a service level agreement, the probationary period is indefinite. That's the whole idea of a service level agreement, is that there are a number of conditions that are spelled out and clause 5.2 in the service level agreement specifically says, if any of the conditions are not met, then the agreement can be terminated with six months' notice. Plus the fact that council is still the one that ultimately makes the budget decision. So this is not in any way tying our hands on a budget decision. So I think it's important to emphasize that we're not creating a probationary period here. We have moved to a whole new model with a greater level of accountability that allows that flexibility and ability to change moving forward, not just in 2017 or 2018, but in any year. I thought that that, that was kind of the intent of moving to this, to this new model. So I think that's important to say that. The second point, though, and I understand where Deputy Mayor Stroud is coming from and I appreciate his words about wanting to move forward and he and I agree in the importance of that. I'm not, it's not that I'm opposed to setting up a working group that could review that performance, but I'm just not sure why we necessarily need to commit to the details of that now. There's nothing that would stop us from later on next year or at next budget time saying if, for example, we didn't like what we saw, that we could then appoint that temporary working group. Without this amendment, the default review working group is us. And I think I would prefer that as a starting point and then if we decided we wanted to bring in a third-party working group, at that point, we could do that. I'm just not sure we want to necessarily lock ourselves into that at this point. Who knows? We may decide later on that maybe there's somebody else that we would want to help a hand in that review. So while I appreciate the intent, I think for that reason alone, I think I'm, I don't think that I can support this, but certainly appreciate the? think that I can support this, but certainly appreciate, again, the words about wanting to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and you have the chair back.
Thank you. Councilor Neal.
Thank you. I support the motion and the intent of the motion. I appreciate what the mayor has just said, but there's a perception within the community that there needs to be some greater degree of credible accountability, and yes, ultimately, we decide on the budget, and I just want to mention, I know that the mover mentioned a number, which is the number of that, of, the amount of money that KEDCO got in the past year. I'm hopeful that, in fact, with the restructuring, that number will come in lower than it's, than last year's figure. So, but getting back to the amendment itself, I think this gives clarity to the community, it gives some reassurance to the community. Frankly, I would love to be able to say, from a council perspective, "It's okay, trust us," but I think the community is looking for more assurance than that, and that assurance can be gained by a wider group of people, independently, collaboratively reviewing the performance metrics. And for that reason, I think that this is a very, very good motion, and, and it would be unfortunate if we defeated this and just went on with the "it's okay, trust us, we'll take care of it," because there's a perception out there, whether true or not, but there's a perception out there that, that that's been the way of business at KEDCO over the years, and it's, and one of the things that came out of this whole process was our commitment to change, and our commitment to find a way to reassure the community, and for that reason, I would strongly suggest that we support the motion.
Thank you. Councilor Allen.
Thank you, I have a question for staff. In, in the report, I didn't see the definition of performance measures laid out. In fact, it's actually part of the service-level agreement that the performance measures would be developed during the first year. Would those performance measures be then brought to council? Is that the intention, so that we would have some sort of agreement on that?
CEO Hunt.
So the way the, the recommendation is constructed with the appendix and the service-level indicators is that, yes, within the first year, those indicators would be firmed up, the service-level agreement would be put in place, and that, and those agreements would, or those indicators would be developed with the analysis, including that of the EDO and the Tourism Corporation, and then that would be reported on as part of the 2018 budget deliberations, and at that point in time, council would have an opportunity to amend those, and discuss them, and understand them, and that sort of thing. Now, in addition, there is regular quarterly meetings, or quarterly reporting, that would also be provided to council, as, and as the indicators were being developed, they would, we assume, to be part of that reporting system.
So, my understanding, then, would be that the, the new performance measures or metrics that we would be seeking, we wouldn't have in place or implemented until, until budget 2018. We wouldn't necessarily know who would be best fit to measure those things, if we haven't defined them yet. And so that's where I'm kind of concerned with this amendment. I think it's, I, I think it makes sense to check in when we have a change in strategy, and when we're going forward. I think it, we're doing something new, we need to, we can't just do something new and then not check in on it. And so I think that the third-party review, or, or setting that up, makes sense. I just don't think it makes sense right now, when we don't know what we're measuring, because we haven't defined the types of performance. It could be increased trade in the region, it could be something much more small and granular, we, we have to both, as an EDO, as Tourism Kingston, as council, kind of work through those performance measures. And so I would support this in the future, but I don't think it's the right time to support it right now. And I, I thought about, thank you, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Stroud, for sending this earlier, because it gave me time to kind of process this. I think it, I think it makes sense to, you know, voluntarily go, go there, but I think that without setting the performance measures, we don't know the kind of expertise yet that we want to evaluate our, the performance with. And so defining who would be on there doesn't make sense. Probably the city treasurer and the auditor would, would remain, but I would want to see what the performance is that we're looking at before we go forward. So I would also want a review of the tourism, of tourism arm. We can't just assume that there, everything will be managed great there. In fact, we've seen in the review documents that often the Economic Development Agency had covered off some of the additional expenditures of the tourism part of the agency as, as part of their thing. So we have to make sure that we're, we, we'd be holistic in this. The $2.1 million is both entities, and we want to make sure that we're evaluating and setting metrics for both of them. So I'm not going to support it at this time, but I would like to support something like this once we develop performance metrics going forward.
Thank you. Councilor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just wondering if the development performance metrics are intended to be entirely covered off by Appendix B, which is what, as I read it, in Performance Management 3.1B, is what the EDO is supposed to report on? Have I got that right? Because there was some question about where the reference to economic development performance metrics is, and it seems to be in Appendix B. Is that correct?
CEO Hunt.
So through you, Your Worship, yes, the appendices are one for tourism and one for economic development. The, the documents, there's no off-the-shelf standard to be able to determine a number of indicators. The development of those service-level agreements was built on the elements that were contained within the review committee's report, including those aspects that were recommended and endorsed by council. And so there could be indicators that are not identified there, that would be meaningful to the work that needs to be done as it develops, and there might be items there that are there at the moment for, for identification that may not make sense to measure in Kingston.
So if there's, and I would agree, there are other metrics identified in the KEDCO review. How do they get incorporated in this if we vote for this? Like, does this like come chiseled in stone, or how, how does, what's the process for developing and enhancing the, the review criteria?
CEO Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, so the idea here is that in the first year, the KEDCO board and the Tourism Board would, would accept the, the introduction of service-level agreements, which is new to the process in, in a, in a defined way between the city's allocation of dollars and, and the work that is measured by those organizations. And during that timeframe, there would be discussions and deliberation, and a determination of what makes sense to be measured and monitored, and how that is developed, and that would be then reported back to council, so that together, council, staff, and the corporations develop a, a system of reflective and reasonably focused measures to be able to understand the performance and the outcomes of both of those corporations.
So, this would, so, I see what you're saying with the process is, what's the timeframe on that? So that it applies, it has to be some kind of time period where this has to be completed, so that it can be applied to the upcoming 2017 year, which is the subject of the amendment.
CEO Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the idea is that, you know, it's, the purpose of it being here tonight is to initiate the conversation, get council to endorse the base level and the contemplated elements of a service-level agreement. That then needs to be addressed, or presented through to the various boards, through the two boards, the one that's currently set up to be amended, and the other one that will be set up, and then it's up to the board to establish that relationship. You know, at the end of the day, the board needs the money from council, so if the board doesn't, if the boards don't determine indicators that are appropriate and reflective of the types of information that council needs, then one would assume that council will make different decisions with their dollars.
Okay, I guess, the reason I'm asking these questions is because my own developed conviction that a lot of the problems we saw came from the lack of performance metrics that we, that we, on council and on the public, could have confidence in. And I think this is a step forward, don't get, like, I'm not criticizing that part of it. I see that it's been written, so that there's a flow back and forth, but the amendment isn't about what? So I think I disagree maybe with the mayor and councillor Allen, at least as they presented their position at, at this point, but, but who? And, and this amendment is saying, let's have a process ready to go that can be done. Like, I wanted to ask the question, which I'll do now, who is going to conduct the performance evaluation? The problem before was, and I don't mean to criticize, this is not about criticism, but, is that people thought that KEDCO was too much evaluating itself, and we were getting reports that reflected that. And I suspect, it's, being on the KEDCO board, it's my observation that the public was not necessarily alone on that. And so, that's my question, my first question is, who is seen as, I see that KEDCO in, under 3.0, is to have, to prepare the Appendix B, but that's not the evaluation of preparing Appendix B, because otherwise you don't have a test really at all. So who is being seen, who is going to do that evaluation? That, as, as a vision in this document?
Who, who wants to answer that? I don't think there's anyone, I'm not sure there's anyone from staff that can answer that.
So, that's the problem, then, okay? We draw a blank. What this amendment, as I see it, and I only saw it here tonight, okay, is doing, is it saying, "Fill the gap." Tell the public that we will have this, at least initially in this first year, have a performance review conducted by competent people. And I'm sure, myself, that between the city treasurer and the auditor, and somebody from Queen's Business, and a member of the public, just to make it as democratic as possible, I suppose, somebody with some kind of qualifications, is a way of doing that, and that's the pure, that's, that's the intent that's being looked at here. And, so, I don't see why we would vote against it, because it says to the public, here it is, this is the who, the who that's not really identified in the document, this is the who that we're going to have do this. And is it perfect? I expect not, okay? But it's either our staff that are doing it, which would probably have the city treasurer involved anyway, or some other bodies, there has to be a body, so--
Thirty seconds.
So, and I'm, I'm practically done. So that was the purpose of my questions, and I think this is why it's worth voting for, because it answers the question, who, for the public, gives them the confidence it will get done, which I think is what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Oh, Councilor Turner.
Yes, and thank you, through you, Your Worship. My concern is, I believe in checks and balances, and, and I see where you're coming from with this amendment, but my question to staff is, how would we budget it? How would we allot the budget to this, and how much would it cost, and how much time would be involved within this process? And we've already undergone a review, and then we'd be doing another mini-review. I believe in reviews, reviews are very important, but maybe you could help answer this question.
CEO Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So if I understand the question correctly, it's with the introduction, introduction of the service-level agreements, how, how do we propose to do the budget? Can I get clarification on that?
So, my question is, so you'll involve the city treasurer, you'll involve someone from Queen's School of Business, and the city auditor. Some of them will be volunteers, but two will be paid staff members, so you'll have to include a budget, I would assume, for that.
So, so Councilor Turner, so you're, you're asking what the budget would be for the temporary working group only that would be proposed to review this?
Right, and where would this budget come out of? Would it come out of KEDCO, or the EDCO, or would it come out of city, and, you know, we've got to create that? So I'm thinking maybe we should push this aside and think about it, before we go ahead.
CEO Hunt.
Through you, Your Worship. That's not a discussion that I had with the mover of the motion, so, you know, if the, if the working group needed funding to do that, we would have to, and it was council's direction that the city pay for that, then we would build it into the budget that's coming up in November.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. Having been somebody who's sat on the KEDCO review committee, and looking back on that now, I know that when, when we finally got to that point, I know that a lot of people had expressed that it may be time for change, and a lot of people expressed that, their opinions in a variety of different ways. And I think that originally, the, the main goal was to have a unbiased, third-party assessment. My intentions when we struck the review committee was to do that, and I thought that that's, during that timeframe, that that was something that was happening, until I landed on that review committee, and there was a lot of, there was a lot of people who were very vocal about the, the structure and makeup, and so on and so forth. My intention when I, when I got into that was an unbiased opinion, and so I think you could look at something like this and assess it a million different ways, and, and you could probably write a book on this amendment, and I, I thank Councilor Stroud too, for bringing it forward, or Deputy Mayor Stroud, and, but my, my thoughts are that an unbiased review isn't necessarily a terrible thing. I'm interested to see what comes out of it. I think that, I'm a little reluctant to support it with some of the specifics that are there, it may be a little too particular, the timing might be a little awkward, too, but I'm likely going to support it, because I think that it is an opportunity for an unbiased review, and I'll, I'll likely be supporting it for that reason.
Thank you. Councilor Bowman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I think this kind of goes a little bit with what councillor Allen was saying. I do like the intent of this, I'm, I'm likely going to support it. I guess my only concern is, what's the baseline? Like, when, when the review happens, what are you comparing it to? Because you've got a brand-new sort of organization that really maybe hasn't found its feet yet, that's learning new service-level agreements and everything, so I guess a caution there would be, you know, what, I'm not sure what you're going to get in that first year, and if it's going to be a fair evaluation, so I would kind of caution going forward that in this, this is something where you could have possibly, maybe not a great review, but at the same time, that could be just because something's changed, and you have nothing really to compare it to, other than perhaps an older organization-- an older organization under a different structure. So that's kind of my two cents there. But I do like the intent of it, and kind of where you're going with your thinking.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud, do you have the last word on the amendment?
Sure. I don't usually do this, but I think that was a great discussion. Thank you again to all the colleagues. I don't think there's any right or wrong answers, but this is, and the intent of this is to introduce a dispatchant, third-party, professional look at the first year of the new agreement. To councillor Allen's suggestions and the questions on what are the metrics, the wording, it leaves it open. So based on the metrics described in the appendix B, doesn't really give any more specifics. The appendix B does have a list of possible metrics, but that's why you have professionals. That's why you have auditors, the city treasurer, Queen's School of Business faculty, a professor that looks at this kind of thing, hopefully. I mean, hopefully the member of the faculty would be someone with some, you know, research background in this area, or they wouldn't volunteer. And even the member of the public that is chosen by nominations, we could choose, the nomination committee could choose someone that would have yet another perspective to bring. All of that, it is really, as councillor Turner said, the who and not the how. The how is still open, it still will be developed, along with the EDO organization itself in its first year. This is all a positive, moving-forward approach. It's an attempt to, as councillor Neil said, reassure the public that we are putting specific measure in place and not just writing a check again for another year. I mean, the suggestion from the community that we ought not have given them any more money until we have a good look at what has happened in the past. There's a lot of validity to that suggestion. This is a way of making sure that the money that we're committing for one more year gets a good professional evaluation on the, as it says there, the cost benefits. So it allows us to come back at budget time next year for a full transparent debate on the cost benefits before we give them more money for 2018. I think it's a win-win. And with this, I just want to point out, I voted against all of the recommendations on this file up until now, based on the fact that I didn't think they went far enough. And with this amendment, if it passes, I will be able to support the recommendation tonight. And I think that's an important thing for me personally, and for those critics that agree with my, my sort of stubborn questioning of the process all along. So I do hope you pass this amendment, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. And that carries by a vote of nine to three. On the recommendation as amended, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? So we will call the vote then on the motion as amended. Please vote. Still one, oh, there we go. And that carries. Okay. Report number 96 from the CAO.
We're just going to sign out the number of councils that have left, and then we'll move the motion.
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor McLaren, that report number 96 from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause broken into two parts. So first, we have a briefing. CAO Hunt will provide introductory remarks. And then we'll have Susan Creasy from the University Hospitals Kingston Foundation Campaign Chair, and Peng San Kao, Kingston General Hospital Board of Liaison to UHKF, who will provide a briefing with respect to the University Hospitals Kingston Foundation Together We Can fundraising campaign. Sue Hunt.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, and to the members of the hospital community. I know you've been here for an hour or so. Welcome to the meeting this evening. Just very briefly, I'd like to indicate that the report before council is an opportunity for us to close the donations and contribution of the previous campaign and to introduce a new one. And I'd like to introduce Susan Creasy, the Campaign Chair of the Together We Can campaign, as well as Peng San Kao of the KGH Board Liaison to the University Hospitals Kingston Foundation. So if you'd like to come forward, Mr. Mayor, they will provide a presentation with respect to the elements of the plan that's attached to the report that I've prepared tonight.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. I am Susan Creasy, Chair of the University Hospitals Kingston Foundation's current campaign. And I'm joined this evening by Peng San Kao, President of Transformex Engineering, and also the Kingston General Hospital Board Liaison to UHKF. There are also several other volunteers with the foundation board and hospital representatives in the gallery this evening, including UHKF Chair Colleen Lowry, Jim Flett, interim CEO for KGH, Dr. David Pacora, CEO of Hotel Do Hospital, Krista Wells Pierce, Vice President of Planning for Providence Care, and UHKF CEO Denise Cummings, who will assist us in her slides. I think most councillors are familiar with the vision and mission of UHKF. Our role is really to inspire generosity of the health of our families, for the health of our families, our region, and beyond. When it comes to generosity and leadership, we are particularly grateful to the city of Kingston. In our last campaign, the city of Kingston contributed $11.6 million to the needed $72 million in our community's local share that enabled our last major phase of redevelopment to take place. Your leadership helped to leverage support from other municipalities and nearly $613 million in provincial infrastructure funds. These infrastructure investments have since resulted in a significant hospital operating budget increase from $472 million in 2006 to $634 million in 2016. There were 5,400 jobs in our hospitals in 2006. Today, that number is 6,612. And even more important than these incredible economic development results, these investments resulted in significant improvements in care environments for the people of Kingston and across the southeastern region. This includes an expanded cancer center, a new pediatric unit, a new dialysis unit, a new acute patient, inpatient mental health unit, and an expanded ICU, 36,000 square feet of new outpatient clinics at Hotel Do Hospital, as well as the brand-new Providence Care Hospital on King Street, which will open to patients in 201 days from now. These projects are about improving access to services and providing more and better care options. These projects have also helped each of our hospitals deliver upon its well-defined role. Kingston General Hospital provides acute inpatient care and is the home of the Cancer Center of Southeastern Ontario. Hotel Do Hospital provides leading outpatient care, and Providence Care provides long-term services related to the aging, mental health, and rehabilitative care. Our physicians and many of our staff work seamlessly between these two sites. We know that great care isn't just about facilities, it's about talented people having the right knowledge and tools to provide the highest levels of care to our residents. In July, Kingston General Hospital and Hotel Do announced plans to integrate the acute care sites with one board of directors and one management team overseeing the integrated academic health science center. UHKF is investing strategically to support patient care equipment, education, and innovation through the hospital's research institutes. The quest for earlier diagnosis, better treatment, and improved outcomes is constant. It is particularly more important in southeastern Ontario right now. More than 20% of our population is over 65, and our residents have more chronic disease and a higher incidence of lifestyle factors that adversely affect their health. Today alone, KGH employs over 3,000 Kingstonians. These jobs result in local economic impact of more than $201 million annually. And even more importantly, our hospitals are here for our residents to access the healthcare services they need. In 2015, Kingstonians had nearly 275 visits to our hospitals. That's an increase of more than 68% since UHKF started planning for the first round of redevelopment in 2006. In October 2015, UHKF launched a $65 million campaign for which I am proud to chair. This campaign is in support of equipment for Phase II projects at KGH, equipment for priority projects at Hotel Do Hospital, and ongoing equipment needs at Providence Care. $44.5 million has been raised to date. That's 68% of our goal. But we know we have a lot of work to do, and as the next wave of redevelopment approaches, municipal support will again be critical to the success factors for securing provincial approvals to proceed. Peng is now going to provide you with a look at what's ahead for our hospitals.
I do this every time I talk, so let's get used to it. Thank you, Sue. There's some exciting work coming up at KGH as our academic center undergoes the next major transformation. This will involve demolishing some existing buildings within the site in order to build new facilities. Nowhere is in need for new space more evident than in our operating rooms. Most of our current ORs are small and have 12-foot ceilings. To meet today's standards of specialized care, you need 16-to-18-foot ceilings for articulating arms and modern AV equipment. Similarly, our dynastic lavatories are spread over seven floors of a wing that was built in 1925. This year, five million tests will be carried out in our labs. We're driving the agenda towards personalized medicine, where lab results identify the optimal treatment for an individual patient. We need better space in order to house the right equipment and to improve the efficiency of our staff. Anyone who has been to the emergency department knows that it is also in need of upgrade. Changes to the space will provide better access with enhanced privacy and will create new drive-through access for ambulances, improving traffic flow and safety and overall safety for patients and the public. New birthing suites will result in more privacy, enhanced safety, and more options for new moms. As the region high-risk birthing center, we know the importance of having access to private rooms and being able to co-locate clinical spaces. Our 22-bed neonatal intensive care unit is also in need of major expansion. Our NICU is the only unit to provide the highest levels of neonatal care in our region. We are one of five areas in Ontario to have direct access to this type of care, right here at home. But our current nursery is crowded, noisy, offering little privacy and opportunity for families to bond with their babies. As you can see in these images, today's standards of care are more patient and family-focused. Several projects are also underway, are also anticipated at Hotel Do Hospital, where the focus is on ensuring our spaces are most suited to outpatient care. Operating suites upgrades are also needed at Hotel Do to better support new surgical practices. Major design changes are needed in the urgent care center, a space that was designed for a full-service emergency department in 1984. The needs of today's urgent care patients are much different, and the expert staff can provide better access to care through a redesigned area. This will also help protect patient privacy. As you can see from this list, there are a number of projects that will result in better access for patients, including improvements to the dynastic imaging suite, which is the busiest in our region. And in the next five to 10 years, the majority of these equipments will be replaced or upgraded. At Providence Care, there is a continual need for equipment upgrades in a variety of areas within the new Providence Care Hospital. On August 2nd, MPPC Sophie Kiwala joined the Minister of Health for a founding announcement in Kingston. It included a planning grant for the second phase of redevelopment at KGH. This is the second of several steps toward the construction being approved. One of those steps will be to confirm that we are able to secure the local share of funding for these projects. Typically, the local share is comprised of 10% of the construction cost and 100% of new equipment. We anticipate the local share for next round of construction slash equipment investments to be in excess of $120 million, and will yield a provincial investment of an estimated $500 million. As Sue mentioned earlier, today's request focuses on equipment needs at all three hospitals. A future request will address costs for construction. Our Economic Health Science Center is contributing to a smarter and healthier city. Our care teams are teaching the healthcare professionals of tomorrow from Queen's University, St. Lawrence College, and beyond. We're also providing world-leading research. Not only are we developing new and better ways to deliver care, but we're also investing in new programs and technologies. A few of the most recent investments are in bariatric surgery and minimally invasive skin cancer treatment. Our research institutes attract leading clinical experts to Kingston. The care you receive at the bedside may be provided by some of the most sought-after specialists in the world, and it's all available right here in Kingston. But as you've heard, we need significant investments in our organizations in order to continue our expertise and to provide our residents with the best quality of care possible. Our infrastructure needs reinvestment at KGH, the site of Canada's first capital. We see how history and innovation are thriving.
Just in closing, our hospitals are looking once again to the leadership from the city of Kingston to take us to the next step. This evening, we are here to urge council to continue the levy in support of the hospital redevelopment. We are seeking a pledge of $6.5 million over five years, with the opportunity to seek renewal in five years as part of a follow-up campaign to assist with the remainder of our local share. The city of Kingston's support has been... The City of Kingston's support has been, and hopes to continue to be, a vital to attracting millions more in grants and donations from our region, municipalities, national corporations, and international philanthropists. Investing in our academic centre is investing in Kingston's future, providing the best care with a healthy return on your investment. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Council Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I have a few questions. They're all sort of related to the theme, I guess, or the reality that we, as a municipal governing body, have no jurisdiction in healthcare. So, in this case, while it's considered a pledge or a donation, it does seem as though it's a type of funding arrangement. So, given that we don't have any jurisdiction to oversee the decisions, I'm just, I'm looking for a little bit of clarification, whatever's possible this evening, on some of the expenditures. So, for example, and some of the proposals put forward in this report, for example, the new Integrated Academic Health Sciences Centre, bringing together the two hospitals, so underneath, so they will come together under one hospital, one budget, on two separate sites, overseen by one board of directors and a C E O and executive team. Are there any cost savings to be found in hospital administration through that effort? Is the first question.
Miss Cullen?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if I could invite Jim Flatt to come forward, or Dr. David Pakora. These are the two C E Os of the hospitals, and they are both serving on the integration panel.
If I could just repeat the question, make sure I got it correctly, that you're asking about the integration of Hotel Do and Kingston General Hospital, and whether there'd be savings from that process. One of the things that I hope people realize within the City of Kingston is that Hotel Do and K G H have been integrating and sharing for many, many years. And it's been an evolution, and we're now getting to a stage where, as you described it, we're getting to the point of one board, one C E O, one team. But there has been a huge amount of integration already done in this city. We share one lab, one medical staff, one medical record, biomedical engineering, information systems, I T. So, one of the things that we've been benefiting from over time to help face really the pressures of costs of healthcare and inflation and all things that the funding hasn't been able to keep up with, has been by doing integration. So, we've done a significant amount of integration. We're now at that stage of bringing together the boards and the C E O and the senior team into integration. So, that's the major next step in a few of the corporate areas we haven't done yet. So, there is only a little bit of savings left to come through that process, and those savings will help us deal with a lot of the pressures on an operating side, not on a capital side, or the investment in equipment. It's more on the ability to live within the means of the public funding that is existing in the reality of today's economic environment in Ontario.
David, I think to add to that?
I think Jim's covered it well. I think it's important to understand that over the last six, seven years, we have not been funded for cost pressures. So, every year, there's between one and a half and two and a half percent inflationary cost pressures that we've had to find internally at the hospitals to cover our operating costs. And this has resulted in us finding literally millions and millions of dollars of savings already, and we anticipate that environment to continue for the next few years. So, as Jim said, a lot of the integration strategy is around helping to create a strong foundation for the future in order to be able to sustain and grow the services that we provide and hope to continue to provide and grow. The capital side is a different budget, and the operating savings that we may realize will go towards future operating costs and patient care directly rather than capital investments.
Thank you. I guess just a follow-up to that. So, then, cost savings, something that you deal with all the time, you're indicating. My question was directly relating to the administrative costs, not to general cost savings in a hospital setting.
Yes, so we are anticipating administrative cost savings. That's probably the major area that's left to be found. As Jim said, in contrast to mergers or amalgamations that you might see with hospitals in other cities, where there are two I C Us, two pediatric units, and you're consolidating into one, that kind of work has already been largely done. And so, the administrative integration is really the main thing that's left to do. And there will be some cost savings, as Jim says, they're not huge, but they'll be directed towards patient care and operating costs.
Any other questions? Council Hutchinson?
Just wondering, what is the origin of the local share being based on ten percent construction cost and a hundred percent new equipment?
It's an interesting history. I've been in the industry now for over thirty years, and when I first came into the field, it was fifty-fifty. Local communities raised fifty percent of the construction costs, and fifty percent of it came from the province, and it was a hundred percent equipment back then. The idea behind the equipment is that the ministry looks towards philanthropy and towards institutions to replace costs within the existing operating funds on the equipment. When you move into a new building and have new equipment, they look almost totally to philanthropy. It was a division of costs that occurred decades ago, and over the period of time where communities have clearly had difficulty raising funds for rebuilding of hospitals, the ministry has chosen, in this province, to say, we'll move it to sixty-forty, they'll take sixty percent, then they moved it to seventy percent, and now they've moved it to ninety percent. So, they have taken a larger share of the construction costs, but with the understanding, then, that they could move it to remain with the local share. So, that has been the evolution of it, and it continues to be the perspective of the province.
Right. I do remember tales of local community fundraising for hospitals, and I'd like to say, I was probably too young to really understand what they were talking about, but, so, thank you. And I would see that, what the progression is. I guess, one of the problems for city councillors and other municipalities is that this, and this happened, and I was here for two thousand and eight, too, so, it's pretty much the same thing. It's that this amount of money, like, we just had a big debate and concern about bringing in a new transit system, or not new, but an enhanced transit system. And we needed to find, what was it, one point three million, something like that, one point six, something like that. So, frankly, for years now, I've been thinking, that money's there, we should be able to use it.
So, questions at this point?
So, my question is this. So, how do you respond to people who say, this is coming out of the property tax, and that's the most regressive form of taxation out there?
I do appreciate, as a resident and a taxpayer, that we're all concerned about what the rate of property tax is, but we're also very concerned about the quality of life that we enjoy, and our health is a significant component of our quality of life. And the ability to access tertiary care and specialized services, a mere bus ride from home is a pretty valuable element of quality of care. We have also seen a very significant, what I would characterize as, return on investment for the contributions made over the last number of years. More than twelve hundred permanent jobs created, a significant increase in influx in provincial funding for operating costs at the hospitals, which is a permanent influx of funding, we hope. And we have seen economic spin-off in other areas, and in addition, we've been able to offer the community an increased range of services and an increased range of treatment options and a better care experience. And so, as a taxpayer, rather than as the foundation's C E O, I'm quite keen on seeing that kind of return in investment.
I might also just add to that. In addition to the patient care benefits, which are huge for Kingston and the region, and the region does depend on us, in order to attract high-level specialists here, we need to have a level of equipment that will support their activity. But it's also important to supporting Queen's University and St. Lawrence College for the various professional schools that they run, which is an important part of the community and the region as well.
One piece I would add, which is just a different flavor to it, but as I came back to Kingston after growing up here, seven years ago, to start working in the facility at K G H, the age of some of the buildings and the need for those buildings to be upgraded to sustain the care and treatments that we have in this area, as well as to grow and to attract, is desperate. I mean, the ORs are nineteen fifties vintage, they're the oldest in the province. They're doing wonderful care in there. We have excellent physicians and staff working, but we are putting them in a very difficult position. The approach in this province has been one to share the burden between the communities and the province, and it has shifted. The province has tried to address some of the issues, but it is a challenge for all our communities, and that's appreciated.
I'm going to add my two cents. As a taxpayer on a private, personal side, and also as a corporate company here in town, and also as a volunteer board member at K G H, I appreciate where you're coming from. As you said, when you are spending your tax dollar, you like to know where it goes. I have to say that the last few years that I've been on the K G H board, I've been in awe and impressed with how much they have done with how little, as the pressure from our province continue to grow, and the needs of our citizens on a healthcare front continue to grow. And as you will see in my social media tonight, the fact that we can live in this great city that is a very small city in that environment, and to have access to that kind of healthcare as a citizen, is, I think it's something that people don't appreciate. And in order for that to continue, to what Dr. Pakora said, we must continue to invest in our infrastructures, we must continue to invest in our equipment in order to attract these renowned researchers, these renowned specialists. They're not going to come to Kingston unless we have the place for them, and the province continue to, there's a pressure cost and a finance. You see this as a donation or investment, whatever you want to call it. I'm also, I have had donate to U H K F as well, as a citizen, as a corporate citizen, for that very reason. I consider it to be one of the best investments we can do for our community.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Questions only, Council Neil?
Thank you. I guess my concern is that we're about to, if, when this passes, we're about to begin our second, soon, our second decade of yearly contributions, and there was some mention of the next drive that will follow this. I guess my concern, and I hope you can comment on this, is that indeed what we're looking at is almost a permanent budget line in a municipal budget for an activity that is defined as being upper-tier government responsibility, province and fence. Could you comment on that observation?
Well, to some extent, you may be right. Healthcare is expensive, there's no question about that. And I think the province has made a huge commitment here to supporting what we need, what this community needs right now. And I think it's important to understand that there is a timing opportunity here. We're not the only community that was asking for major redevelopment in the province. And I think partly as an expression of confidence in the integration that's happening amongst the hospitals in Kingston, the ministry decided to put their support here right now, when I know that there were at least two other major projects in the province that were competing for the same support at the provincial level. So, in some sense, there's a timing opportunity, and yes, I mean, we will need renewal over time of various sorts, although with the completion of the so-called Phase Two, Providence Care, new hospital being built, major redevelopment completed at K G H and at Hotel Do, that should set the stage for many years of not needing huge redevelopment, but there will always be equipment needs and hopefully less expensive projects on the go.
Thank you. Council Boom?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I guess in your opinion, we've talked about the costs of supporting this, what are the costs of not supporting it? So, without this money, what are we risking? Is it something like, perhaps the merger could be under threat? Would it be the closure of a hospital? Would it be loss of services to the community? What are the risks of not providing this money?
One of the realities, just to use an example, in our ORs, we have had to close one of the ORs because it's just no longer able to meet standard because of the age of the facility and the inability to upgrade it any further, for some of the reasons that Ping mentioned earlier. As things change, standards increase, then we have to move forward, and we can't put people into some of the facilities. So, we do need to upgrade them to maintain them and sustain those facilities, not only to meet the new needs of the equipment and the services that are being offered, but we do need to maintain them to a standard that they meet the code. So, we have some very, very old buildings, because there hasn't been the need to renovate until this point in time, but there will be ongoing pressures from that. The other reality to the question you're asking is very much the change in the demographics, the change in the demand in this area, is demanding different services, there's different expectations of people who come and want to live in this area for the services they can receive. Some of the older facilities don't meet those standards. The reality is, our N I C U, which is one that you saw on the screen, and compared to the modern facilities, we have a ward-styled N I C U, which is very crowded for the size of population that demands it now, as is our E R. Those things become detractors to people wanting to get the services in this region.
Thank you. So, would it be fair, in your opinion, to say that if this money was not forthcoming, we'd see a degradation in the quality of care, especially as the need for that care is about to increase with an aging population? Is that a fair statement?
So, as Jim alluded, there are three tiers of ORs at K G H in terms of vintage. The core set of operating rooms were built in the late nineteen fifties, they are the oldest operating rooms in the province, and even within this region, Napanee, Belleville, Brockville, all have newer operating rooms than those ones, and they do not meet standards for future care and barely for current care.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. So, with that, we will move then to one B, University Hospitals Kingston Foundation Together We Can fundraising campaign. Council Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm wondering, I have this vision now of our transit department going to the provincial legislature, doing a fundraising pitch for operating costs. I guess, you know, I could completely understand and respect the work that is being proposed here and what we are being asked to contribute, but this is downloading. When we're talking about operating costs and capital costs and the relation to healthcare, healthcare is funded through general taxation, through upper levels of government. Other services and hospitals, that all relates to healthcare, of course, beds, food, equipment, but it's not our jurisdiction. And more than that, more importantly, we, as the City of Kingston, with our tax base, would be funding a regional hospital that serves everywhere from Toronto to Ottawa, Peterborough, Smith Falls, Belleville, for all sorts of types of care needed, and, you know, no issue there with the fact that we have a regional hospital. But those residents and those municipalities are not being asked to hand over six million dollars, six and a half million dollars, over four years. And on that point of the amount, any professional fundraiser could be expected to raise that amount in a matter of months, given what we're looking at right now with our own budget and our lack of operating budget for the city, for all the things that we want to invest in, and the fact that we're getting very close to budget time, where we're going to be looking at all that's been mentioned so far this evening, and how we're going to provide for better quality of life for residents of Kingston, who will, as it is their right under the Canada Health Act, continue to receive quality healthcare in this city, but who will not if we don't take those funds and invest them into transit or into social housing, affordable housing, they won't receive those benefits, and those are our responsibility. So, for these reasons, I don't So for these reasons, I don't support this recommendation. I think we can all find lots of ways to spend this money, and with all due respect, I would like to see the province, or potentially private donors, take up the cause here and contribute this amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil?
Thank you. It was already mentioned by a previous speaker, I believe, councillor Hutchison, that property tax is the most regressive form of taxation, and it's where the, it's our primary and only source for a lot of our operating funds. The much more progressive form of taxation is the reserve of the province and the federal government in the form of income tax, which is a progressive form of taxation, no matter how frustrating it can be at times. So I have a concern from that perspective. The city, municipalities across the province and across the country are facing greater and greater pressures because of upper-tier governments abandoning areas of their responsibility, whether it's childcare support, healthcare, housing, and it ends up becoming increasingly the concern of municipalities, even though we don't have a progressive, fair, totally fair taxation system. I totally support what the hospitals are doing. My problem is that I'm not sure I was elected by my constituents to decide how they should spend their charitable dollars. And the reality is that I do plan giving, and frankly, I brought my checkbook today. I'm quite happy to write a check if anybody's still here at closing from the hospital and make a donation. But I have trouble getting my head around the idea that I should make a donation on behalf of the 15,000 people in my district. And that's what I'm finding troubling about this. I'm also finding it troubling that it appears to have originally been a one-time drive for modernization, for capital, and now increasingly, it's a permanent budget line that we're being asked to put in our municipal operating budget to help with the hospitals' both capital but also operating needs. And that, I don't believe, is what I was elected to represent my constituents. I was elected to maintain services within a reasonable tax base. And for us to take $1.3 million of a year out of operating, when we're faced with operating crises quite frequently here, and give it to an area that really is federal and provincial I'm not trying to sway anybody's vote, because this is a tough vote, and I've kind of gone swayed both ways in my own mind, because I know what good work the hospitals do in our community and how vital they are for our community. But the bottom line is, I am very happy to make a generous donation, charitable donation on my personal behalf. I'm not willing to make a charitable donation on behalf of my constituents. So for that reason, I won't be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Strad is not here. So the previous deputy mayor, I believe, was councillor Neil? Would you take the chair, please?
I believe it was, and therefore I recognize you, and there was one other hand, and that's, but I think you got in first, so go ahead.
Thank you very much. So there are rules to the game, and we can, we can have concerns about why it is that 10% of capital costs, that 100% of equipment costs fall to the municipality. It is what it is. In fact, we've heard from history that it actually used to be a greater burden on the local share than it is right now. So this is not new. This is something that's been around for a long time, and to be honest, we could decide that we don't like the rules of the game, and we could take our ball and go home, but then that provincial investment will go to some other community, go to some other hospital. I think that we have a great opportunity in front of us. We are presented with an opportunity to invest $6.5 million, which will in turn leverage $500 million in provincial investment. Now that is a return on investment if ever there was one. Again, you can argue with the rules of the game, but they are what they are. And I think within the rules, this is an opportunity that we can't pass up. Now, the comment was made earlier that we're being asked to contribute, but other municipalities in the region aren't being asked to contribute, but in fact, this is not the case. Other municipalities in the region are going to be asked to contribute. If anything, we have the best deal of any municipality in the region, because we're investing in our own community. Other communities are going to be asked to invest in our community as well. So this is a great opportunity for Kingston to be able to have a state-of-the-art, new hospital rebuild, which is so in line with our vision to be a leader as a municipality. I don't think we want to be followers, especially in healthcare. This is a, this is a sector that will be of increasing importance in our country moving forward. We've already identified healthcare as a strategic sector where we want to grow, we want to attract more innovation and entrepreneurship and new, new ways and new methods in healthcare. There's enormous research spinoffs. Well, it's going to be hard to attract all that if we're lagging behind. So I see this as an opportunity to be state-of-the-art, to be a leader, so I don't know why we wouldn't pass, why we would pass up this opportunity. So I understand, obviously, it's a challenge. When you've only got a certain amount of dollars, and you're right, when we're facing budget pressures, we need to think about where's the best return on that investment. But again, I just haven't seen many proposals come across our desk where we're going to get a $500 million return for a $6.5 million investment. So for that reason, based on the math alone, I'm more than happy to support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Shell was next, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm more than happy to support this recommendation. There are many organizations, I know, in the arts in particular, which is much smaller than this one, you need to show very often municipal support to get upper-level grants. That's the way it works. If your city doesn't support you, chances are the provincial and federal funding bodies won't either. The comment about upper-tier abandoning support, we are just going through some interesting times with transit and affordable housing, money coming back to the community because we've got a different political system in place right now. We may not like the timing of some of these things, because they're making, putting a lot of pressure on us as a municipality, but the support is coming. And another point that is really important, if we want to change some things about our tax system, we do have some avenues. We've got one councillor on the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, another with Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Those are very good, formal, structured areas where we can push for change if we choose to try to change the property tax, but it's what we have, and I have a selfish reason for supporting it. I want cities hospitals to be the best they can be, because I'll need them. I know very well I'm going to, and so will many of us, and I would rather be able to take the bus, as was mentioned, to the hospital than have to go to Belleville or Brockville, because they all have hospitals too. So there is a bit of a competition here for resources, and I do think that the breakdown in costing is very much to our benefit. It won't actually affect our budget in that we already are giving this money every year. We just suddenly won't have a bonus. It will be something that doesn't require a tax increase. So I am more than happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Trimmer?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. I'd like to say that I support this motion, and I think it's an amazing return on investment. When you think about developing our healthcare within our city, creating jobs, keeping people here in Kingston employed, and building this amazing hospital, Providence Care, I was very fortunate to do a tour of Providence Care, and the innovation and the creative space that they've developed there really puts us ahead of the game in this province for healthcare. So in terms of that, I think we're very fortunate, and I highly support funding for this hospital, that we're able to have this within our city, and to spend only so much money to create so much. So I'm voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. I totally agree with yourself and councillor Shell, so I won't repeat that. I do think that as elected officials, obviously, we're put in a position to make the tough decisions, and as councillor Shell did point out, we have a huge transit cost looming on the horizon that we probably see less than 2% of our residents actually make use of. However, we continue to support transit, even though I suppose I could argue and say, well, of those that elected me into this position, 98% of them don't ride transit, so I should vote against it. But you vote a number of times, or you support, you know, recommendations to come before this council for the betterment of the community at large. And I really think that having this, this health, these healthcare facilities here are a benefit to the community. I know 21 years ago, when I was quite sick for almost a year, if I'd had to have traveled outside of the community for the healthcare that I required, it would have cost my family a fortune. But fortunately, here in Kingston, we have the facilities, so it was a matter of my traveling back and forth from home to hospital and back, and I think there's a lot of community residents out there that appreciate the fact that they don't have to travel out of this community and look at those horrendous expenses that they can incur, because we're lucky enough to have the facilities right here in our own backyard. And we don't want to see, I think as councillor Bohm was getting at in his questioning of the presenters, the potential or the risk that we could run if we don't continue to support our local facilities, then we could see residents are going to be incurring horrendous costs well beyond what the potential risk is to their property tax increase, which in this case really is no increase associated with this decision, because this decision, if we support it this evening, is about $300,000 a year, less than what we have been giving to this foundation for the last 10 years. So we're seeing a reduction in what's being asked of us, but we have other challenges ahead of us where we have to make tough decisions come budget time. And staff have already begun to identify where we can look at potential cost savings and are bringing that back to us at budget time. But I would urge council to support this, because you never know, as councillor Shell alluded to, when you're going to need those facilities. And I can tell you, it's very nice, it's really nice to have them here, and I know they've expanded a great deal from when my need was there, and, but you never know when it might pop up again, and the need's going to be there again, and it's nice to have it. And I, as the mayor pointed out, for what we're being asked to contribute, what we see in return is overwhelming, and it's the only way that we're going to succeed if we continue to make that investment in order to see such a huge return of some $500 million. So I would urge council to support this. I think it's good for the community, and that's the way we have to look at it, is what's good for the community as a whole, not just what we may feel we're representing in our own district.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchison?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think a number of really good points to be made. I think what perhaps some of us are concerned about is that, that, of course, from an investment point of view, this is a great deal. There's, the mayor demonstrated that quite well. It's arithmetic, right? And this is very like what happened in 2008, same sort of debate. And the issue is, I think for some councillors, is that they can certainly see the benefit of the investment, they can certainly see the returns to the community, as councillor George was talking about, councillor Shell, you know, both in terms of the overall community and personally, and so on. And first of all, I want to say that the hospital foundation has got almost nothing to do with this, except they put the hard work into figuring out the numbers and what they need, and which we're all thankful, I'm sure. But it's the rules of the game, as the mayor said, and I guess for some of us, the rules are a bit rigged. So when, in 2008, we were left with, some of us were left with the feeling there's a faint whiff of blackmail going on here. And the reason is, is concern for those things that have been shorted, councillor Shell was pointing to certain investments, but the fact of the matter is, over the last 25 years, the federal government, who supplies a lot of these health dollars that come through the province, has made drastic reductions in certain areas of social services and social need. And the province has followed suit in the mid-'90s, early 2000s, in a particularly nasty sort of way. So our citizens, all of whom need healthcare, are not, you know, benefited in a good way, in anything like an equal way. They've lost more than some others. And that's what I think is concerning, okay? I think transit serves much more than 2%, but Kevin, councillor George's general remark is, of course, accurate, but transit serves everybody if we want to have a well-functioning, non-congested city. So I just wanted to point out those things. I think, I doubt anybody really wants to vote against this in terms of the returns, you know, but it's just a sign that it's a provincial responsibility, it should come out of the income tax. Everybody that thinks about these things knows that, and it just rubs some councillors the wrong way when we think about the things that we really need, that we're having to do. Like, for instance, we're involved in poverty reduction in some minor, minor way, but it does help a lot of people, some of those programs we've got, but it shouldn't be us, right? Affordable housing, I know the mayor has argued in the past, before he was mayor, that, you know, okay, I'm for that, but it shouldn't come out of the property tax. I was just, I didn't even, wasn't even arguing for it, I was just referencing it in my question. So people will vote as they see fit, I just don't want people thinking that, I just don't get the feeling that anybody thinks that this isn't a good thing to do. It's how it's been done and how the system has been structured, and it doesn't result in entirely fair outcomes. And so I think that's something to keep in mind as we go along.
Thank you. So anybody else who wishes to speak? Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. I'm considering the community value here. We're talking about health. Health is one of those things that you really can't put a price on. Once you've lost your health, no amount of money can really compensate for it. lost your health, no amount of money can really compensate for that. And in a certain sense, um, we do have insurance and that kind of stuff, but it would be so much better if we didn't have to lose the health in the first place. If you are in danger of losing your health, the value that a modern hospital provides far outweighs any loss in, uh, tax revenue that are tax costs to you. And in this particular case, we're not asking to fund everything. We've got a reduced amount and it's been reduced over the years. And we're providing the ability to keep or maintain or retain or improve health. Um, and it's hard to put a price on that. And we, I really wouldn't want to for the simple reason that it's at a higher order value. If we're going to value this in terms of money, that, I find that the worst reason to, to support a healthy, um, advanced hospital. But if that isn't the one, that's great. If that's the one that works for you. But really, we're talking about a quality of life here, a reason for people to come to Kingston to enjoy life and a livable city. This is part of what we're asking for in our strategic plans. And it seems that the province has dropped the ball on this. Sure, they are providing some of the money and we're leveraging it and we have to provide our stuff. But yes, it is a provincial jurisdiction. And they're not funding it in its entirety. So do we make our residents suffer for that? Do we allow them to suffer worse living standard as a result of less care, less hospital care? That doesn't seem reasonable or right to me at a higher to order of level of value than just funding. So yes, we should probably tell the provincial government that they're needing to put in more money into this. But in the absence of that and in this opportunity, I think that the benefits far outweigh this. And we're not just talking about monetary benefits. We're talking about health, livability, quality of life, all the things that make life worth living. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, uh, very quickly, whether it's municipal tax dollars, provincial or federal, uh, this is a burden that is always going to be on the taxpayer. When it comes to something like this, uh, we could say no to this and then we're still going to pay provincial taxes. Those taxes are just going to go fund another community's hospital initiatives. So we'll lose the service and yet we'll still pay the provincial and federal taxes that fund this. The only list, risk there is that we now lose the service. And a personal experience of mine was, uh, with my firstborn and going to the NICU and, uh, having that right here in Kingston is huge when somebody's going through that. So to kind of echo what Counselor McLaren said, this is something that we have a gem in our community and we have the ability here to keep this, to access those other levels of government and to reinvest in our community. And as the mayor mentioned, to innovate and to actually use this as an economic driver and an innovator. So for that reason, I don't know why you wouldn't support this. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing no, we will call the vote on item one B. If everyone can just vote again.
So, Mr. Mayor, we're just, uh, changing the, uh, the information here. It'll be just a couple minutes.
Oh. Okay, so that carries by a vote of nine to two. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we're just having a little technical glitch here. Uh, we're going to ask that you re-vote shortly.
Do you want us to root to sign in again? So everyone can just sign in again? Okay, so we will redo the vote. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of nine to two. Okay, moving on. Report number ninety-seven from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number ninety-seven from the Planning Committee for consideration of council. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Schell, seconded by Counselor Neal, that report number ninety-seven from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. Would anyone like anything separated? Seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. Item one is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment eighty-five King Street East and forty-six Simcoe Street. Item two is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment twelve-hundred Highway fifteen. And item three, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment Markland Street. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report number ninety-eight from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, it's my pleasure to present report number ninety-eight from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee for consideration by council.
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that report number ninety-eight from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there are just the two items. Number one, appointment to the mayor's Arts Award Working Group. Uh, and number two, so that is Ms. Lynn Kenny and Mr. Brett Christopher, who are appointed to the mayor's Arts Award Working Group. And number two, appointment to the Public Art Working Group, uh, Mr. Stephen Durst is appointed. So we will call the vote. And that carries, uh, eleven to one. Nothing from committee of the whole, uh, no information reports, no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we do have a few motions. Uh, motion number one, that as requested by Amanda Todd, Legacy Society, Light Up Purple Organization, council proclaim October tenth, twenty sixteen, as Light Up Purple Twenty-Sixteen World Mental Health Day in the city of Kingston. Can I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Osannick.
Sorry, point of order, Mr. Mayor. Um,
Counselor Holland?
On that last vote, I believe I voted in favor.
Okay. So would you like a re-vote?
Could we re-vote? That would be good.
So, so we're in the middle of another vote. Uh, Mr. Clerk, or do we need to complete this vote first? Okay. So we're going to complete the vote on the first miscellaneous motion and then we will go back and re-vote. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of twelve to one. Okay, so now we will go back and we will, Counselor Hutchinson.
I didn't deserve that. I'm, I would have swore I put it, yes, honest to God.
Do you want, did you want to re-vote too?
Yeah, if you don't mind. It was crazy.
So, so I, I don't know if rebooting the system has caused some issues here. So, so first, let's re-vote the, um, vote on the arts, or the ARC, uh, report number ninety-eight. That was the two appointments to the mayor's Arts Award Working Group and the Public Art Working Group. Please vote. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to a re-vote then of miscellaneous motion number one. Please vote. And that carries. Uh, number two, that the resignation of Joan Scaglioni from the Public Art Working Group be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Schell, seconded by Counselor Bohm. Please vote. Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so, um, we're, we're going to accept the resignation of the person we just appointed, uh, to the Public Art Working Group. So, um, that the resignation of Stephen Durst be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Holland. Please vote. Okay, carries by a vote of twelve to one. Okay, uh, on to new motions. Uh, number one, moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stroud. Whereas Kingston's downtown is a year-round destination for both residents and tourists alike, and downtown businesses require every possible opportunity to see success in every season. Whereas climate patterns have shifted winter temperatures and precipitation levels in Kingston, resulting in milder November weather. Whereas the current bylaw number eighty-seven dash one thirty-six limits the patio operating season to seven months, requiring operators to close at the end of October. And whereas other municipalities offer additional flexibility regarding patio operation throughout the calendar year, therefore be it resolved that staff be directed to review the bylaws and policies for the patio operating season and report back to the Administrative Policies Committee with options for the twenty-seventeen patio season. Counselor Allen, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I won't take too long with it. Um, I think this is just, uh, starting a process and a piece of housekeeping. Maybe some other good things will come from it. Um, uh, we know, uh, through many of our conversations that the health of our downtown businesses are so important to, uh, everything that we do. And this is just one little, uh, thing that takes a bit of effort, uh, on behalf of staff and council to, uh, take place and, uh, sort of consider because, uh, the review needs to touch on public works and snow clearing and what to happen if there, if it does change, um, and create processes and policies around that. Um, I've talked to staff about this. They're happy with this motion. They're happy to move forward. Um, but I think that, uh, while often we find big, large strategies to invest in our downtown and to encourage things, we have to also pay attention to the details like this to ensure that we have a healthy vibrant downtown. So I hope that council will support us on this. Um, I think it's, uh, fairly clear what we're asking for. And, uh, the decision really about whether we extend it or not will come back as a recommendation from staff.
Thank you, Counselor Neal.
Yes, I was happy to see this motion come forward. Uh, five or six years ago, I was lobbied, uh, but, and I hope that an early, if we get an early spring, a spring opening would be considered as well. Uh, you may remember, I think, five years ago, we had wonderfully summer-like weather in March. And Richard from Queen's Inn asked me about why he, we couldn't open the patios a month early with that kind of weather. And there were tourists, uh, in the area at Easter and that, asking the same kinds of questions. And, uh, we kind of left it at the time up to the BIA to take some action on it, to come forward. And it kind of got lost, I think, in the shuffle. And so I totally applaud this. And when it goes to admin policies, I'm sure you will consider adding potentially a month in the spring and a month, month in the fall. And this is, uh, Counselor McLaren's famous non-tax revenue because that would add two additional months, uh, of revenue to, uh, to patio rentals. So, so I, I hope that recommendation comes back soon.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to the mover for, uh, giving the heads-up on this motion and giving the possibility to second it. Uh, I do hear about this fairly often as I live in the downtown. And, uh, in fact, there's a new business in my district which is thinking of opening a patio and, uh, is wondering whether the, the fee is, is justified and asking me for help, uh, on that and investigating that. And, uh, that business owner, as well as the other ones that I've, uh, spoken to that have patios, I think will be very happy to know that we're, uh, we're taking another look at the policy. Because, um, if you're a business owner and you're paying for your patio and then you're told an arbitrary date is what tells you when to open and close, rather than, uh, the reality of, of, uh, you know, of what their business is subject to. I mean, of course, it's weather-dependent. That's, that's the nature of a patio. But the, um, you know, these places sometimes don't survive. They sometimes go under. We all know about the viability of the downtown. And I think like what Counselor Allen said about the, uh, starting the conversation and it, oh, it may lead to other things. I think that's absolutely right. This is one step. Uh, it's just a small one. Very happy to, uh, support it. And I'd like to say that, that I have heard from a couple of business owners that they would like to have more control over the decision. Not every patio is going to want to be open for longer. Not every patio wants to pay, uh, a set fee. And maybe we can look at a policy that has more flexibility on all, on all accounts. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote then on motion number one. Please vote. And that carries. For our motion, motion, new motion number two, I will hand the chair over to the deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. So new motion number two is moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Camden. And it reads as follows. Whereas City Council's recent vote to approve the Capitol condominium project at two-twenty-three Princess Street was an important decision for the future of downtown development and the city. And whereas it is important that any questions or concerns related to the vote be settled. And whereas one of City Council's priorities in the two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen strategic plan is fostering open government, a commitment to full openness, transparency and accountability with respect to all of its decisions. And whereas Counselor Camden has welcomed the opportunity to review his participation in the debate and vote on the two-hundred-and-twenty-three Princess Street application, therefore be it resolved that the city solicitor be directed to engage the services of an integrity commissioner who will conduct an investigation pursuant to the municipal act as to whether Counselor Camden contravened, sorry, Counselor Adam Camden, count, contravened the city of Kingston code of conduct for members of council
for members of council and committees with respect to a development application for 223 Princess Street Kingston. And that should members of council wish clarification and advice as to their code of conduct, that the integrity commissioner be available to provide this service. And I guess I'll leave it... The mover can go first if you'd like to.
Thank you very much. I think we all know around this room that the Capitol was one of the most divisive and most polarizing issues that we have faced as a council. There were many people in the community on both sides, and it split council down the middle. But while there are issues that will divide us, I think it's clear that we are unified in our view that the integrity of council is paramount. And having the confidence of the community in our decisions is also paramount. So this motion is essentially meant to address that and also to remove any remaining lingering questions about potential conflict of interest on this very important vote for the future of our downtown and the future of our city. Not going to say a whole lot more beyond that. I think the motion itself is self-explanatory. But I will be discreet, and I will ask members of council to consider being discreet on this as well. Because this motion is about an identifiable individual. Technically, we should be dealing with this in closed session. But we're not. I think it's important, in the spirit of openness and transparency, that we deal with this in open session. But I think that we need to recognize that we are talking about a specific person around this table, and I think we should be discreet and respectful as possible. I understand that there were some concern raised earlier about Counselor Camden himself seconding the motion. So this was discussed with both the city clerk and the city solicitor. And quite frankly, I support Counselor Camden's right to support an investigation into his own actions. There is a report that will come back from this. It will be open for all members of the public to see, including all members of council. And it will include any recommendations. If there's anything that we did wrong, that we can then remedy. There is also a larger issue that's come up in the discussion around this issue, and that's the larger discussion about an integrity commissioner in general. And should we have a permanent integrity commissioner? Obviously, it's a debate that we had early in our council. It may be something that we want to deal with later on. But in my view, that's not a discussion for tonight. This is a very specific motion, dealing with a very specific issue, about a very specific individual. So again, my request to council is that we would consider that separately. And my understanding is from City Legal is that they will be coming forward with just such a recommendation very soon. So with that, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think that that's all that I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Your Worship. And before we go any further, I will be enforcing the rules of order as far as relevance to speaking on this motion and not to the question of whether we need to hire a permanent integrity commissioner. Any comments on that will be ruled out of order. Counselor Neal, you're next.
Thank you. All my... Everything I want to say will be regarding process. And I had a good opportunity to speak to the city solicitor earlier today. And there's some questions that I asked that I think should be publicly answered. The one is, I know a couple of people self-identified to me to say that they had sent in a complaint to the Ontario Ombudsman. It's my understanding, and if the solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that the ombudsman will hear such complaints only if there isn't a... An integrity commissioner that the municipality has taken on to deal with it from a local level. Is that accurate?
City Solicitor?
Through you, Your Worship, that is accurate. The Office of the Ombudsman has made it very clear that they are a course of last resort. And they're really looking for the municipalities to deal with this at the first level, which we would do with this motion.
Thank you. The other... The other issue is, I know that there's... And I just want to say, I appreciate that this is in open session. Because the... There was another experience in the last council where we hired an integrity commissioner. And at the time, it was Counselor Glover. And he was exonerated in that process. And he did, in fact, rightfully vote in open session to receive the report, which was accurate. And I'm looking to the clerks to correct me if anything I say is inaccurate. He did...
Mr. Clerk, could you just answer the question, please?
Through you, that is correct. He did vote.
Yeah, and he did recuse himself from speaking to the issue. When it wasn't... I thought at the time somewhat inappropriately in camera. But I'm glad that that process was followed. The other question I have, and I had asked this earlier. The... What are the potential recourse for any of us who might be found in breach under the... Under the integrity commissioner rules? What is the range of outcomes that might occur?
I guess, Ms... Yes, City Solicitor?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The integrity commissioner's role is set out in the municipal act. And it is clear that the integrity commissioner reports to council in the performance of the independent investigation that they undertake. It is also clear that generally, they'll make a determination and that the municipality does have the ability to impose penalties on the member of council. If the commissioner reports to the municipality, then their opinion, there has been a contravention. And those penalties are specifically provided for in the municipal act. A reprimand or a suspension of remuneration paid to the member in respect of his or her services. So those provisions are set forth.
And it's my understanding that this process is completely separate from the municipal conflict of interest process, which the integrity commissioner report doesn't negate the potential for that process to take place. Is that accurate?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. That is essentially accurate. The integrity commissioner has the ability to deal with those matters set forth in the Code of Conduct, which does indicate conflict of interest is on that list. The Municipal Conflict of Interest Act is a statutory code which does have its own provisions. And so I believe that answers your question.
Thank you for that clarity. Thank you.
Okay, so next to my list is Counselor Camden.
Thank you, and through you. I guess it's important to put some context to how this ended up coming to be. Before the vote, very close to before the vote, I found out that people were saying that I may have potentially a conflict. I had contacted city staff and wanted to come up with the proper approach to figuring out whether, in fact, I did have a conflict of interest. I was advised to seek legal counsel, independent legal counsel, which I did. I was under the assumption that I did not have a conflict of interest, seeing as how I did not have a business relationship with the developer. I also was not about to make any money with the developer. There was no contract of any kind. I'd never been introduced to this person. So my assumption was that I didn't have a conflict. But what do I know? I'm just a counselor. I figured I would do the proper thing and consult with independent legal advice. And they reassured me that with a full document that I did not have a conflict of interest. As a result, I voted. At that particular time, it was a bit of an awkward position for me, to say the least, because on one hand, do I declare conflict of interest when I don't have one? Or do I vote and be subject to gross ridicule, which has gone on since the vote? Well, actually, before the vote, too. The day of the vote, I woke up to my car. My car was keyed. My family's been harassed. I doubt there's anybody in this room who's going to walk to their car and wonder if their windows were smashed. I actually think about that now. All for something that a lawyer said that I don't have a conflict on. Then I have people coming up and basically saying they're ashamed of council because something that the only person who knows every single detail of what hap... Of whether or not I have a conflict is also the only person who is actually an expert. And that is the lawyer that I sought the legal advice from, who said that I do not have a conflict. So it's very... It's a very tough situation because do I... In the future, I think... I decided to call an integrity commissioner because, to a certain degree, I was afraid for the safety of myself, my family. It had gone way too far. So I figured we needed to get an integrity commissioner to come in and be involved in this because it's absolutely been disgusting. The things that people have done are absolutely gross. And I figured I'd call an integrity commissioner because I can't live my life this way. It's totally bizarre. And I think that we need an integrity commissioner moving forward. I don't want to be put in a position like this ever again because I need the lawyer's opinion to be done up front and to everybody, which is why I seconded the motion. Counselor... Or sorry, the mayor and myself were playing phone tag, trying to call each other with the same idea. I wanted to get an integrity commissioner involved because I have absolutely nothing to hide. At no point have I ever thought that I had a conflict of interest. Even now, I don't think I have a conflict of interest. But I want to be open with everybody, and I hope everybody appreciates that. And hopefully, people can act in a mature manner about this.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thank you. I was on the council during the time of Counselor Glover and know what an incredibly difficult time that was. I also remember, it was a horrible time, actually. When I first became a councillor and I was advised that we have a code of conduct and that it's my responsibility, if I feel at all worried about whether I should or shouldn't vote, I should go to a lawyer and get a legal opinion. And the City of Kingston pays for it. And I did that once because I didn't... I was on a volunteer board. And I literally wasn't sure. And I was told, "Good thing that you asked because you probably shouldn't vote." No, it wasn't probably, "You shouldn't vote." So I got a professional opinion, and I was guided whether or not to vote on that. I certainly wasn't told in advance by other people whether or not to vote on that. It was my... It's my decision to seek advice, professional advice or not, and take the consequences. It's not my order to go ask the public, "Should I or shouldn't I vote on this?" Or have the public tell me. It's my decision. I was elected to make decisions. So I have found this whole situation extremely unsettling. And I think Counselor Stroud earlier's comment about, "Are we all under the gun?" was relevant to what's been going on lately. So I applaud Counselor Camden for what he's done. This is a dreadful situation all around. I feel for all of us because we are all being looked at in a certain way. And yet, when I go to constituents and ask to be voted in, I don't expect them to look at me like I'm some kind of end-run person or doing something sneaky. So I applaud this, and I'm glad it's going to be out in the open. And I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Counselor Zanick?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. We know that this, whatever the outcome of the integrity commissioner report will be, that it's not going to affect the seven-six council decision for the Capitol condo. But we do know that there were the three emails and the letter sent to us before September 20th, when we did vote on the Capitol condo. And I just want to ask the city solicitor if those three emails and letters could be given to the integrity commissioner so that that person, he or she, could decide, you know, if they want to contact the writer of the three emails and letters or not.
Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Any material that is relevant to this matter can be passed on to the integrity commissioner. They have a wide scope in terms of information that they may ask in terms of doing an independent investigation. And I fully expect those requests will be made as well. And they have the ability to determine who they speak to, to get the answers they require, to ensure that it's a fulsome report that's completed.
Thank you. I do support this motion. And I have one more question about that very last clause. And that's if us as members of council wish clarification and advice about our Code of Conduct to the city solic... Sorry, to the integrity commissioner. So I know that my answer right now is yes. So what are the next steps? Do we wait for the report? Or like, how do we tell staff, "Yes, we would have questions," when the integrity commissioner is hired? And then how do we go about asking those questions?
Ms. Nicholson?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I will work on that and come back to council with information in that regard. The integrity commissioner is available to provide that information. And so we'll make those arrangements available.
Anyone else wish to speak? Your Worship, do you have anything else to say? Okay. I had a couple of questions, but they were covered by Counselor Zanick's questions. Maybe just one quick clarification. Do I need to give up the chair to ask a question? Just a question, I'm not going to make a comment. If a member of the public wants to volunteer information to the integrity commissioner, is that... Is there an avenue for that? And how would they go about it?
I think if a member... Through you, Deputy Mayor, sorry. I believe in response to Counselor Zanick's question, we will forward all relevant information that we have. If someone wishes to pass on their information to me that could subsequently be passed on to the integrity commissioner, it will be the integrity commissioner who will ultimately make that call as to whether or not they wish to pursue that. I wouldn't want to speak for the integrity commissioner in terms of how they conduct the report or who they want to speak to in that regard. I do not have that authority.
So a member of the public could just write a letter to the city solicitor or the city clerk? And either way, you would forward it on to the integrity commissioner?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The formal process is to send things on to the clerk. However, in this instance, I believe if it's also forwarded to me, it would be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Seeing as no one else wishes to speak, I will call the vote on the motion. Please vote. That passes unanimously. And with that, I return the chair to your worship. Thank you very much. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk asks for minutes.
Moved by Counselor Holland, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stroud, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2016 dash 23, held Tuesday, September 20th, 2016, be confirmed.
Please vote. And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, I will ask for bylaws.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Camden, that bylaws one through seven be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. Still one person to vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by deputy mayor Stroud, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw 2 three readings.
And that carries.
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor O'Sannick, that bylaws 2 through 7 be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor George. And we're adjourned, thank you very much.